Welcome, everyone. February 11th, 2025. Work session is now called to order. Um, first up, cut a, cut a couple of items to get out of the way. Um, I need a motion for approval of purchase of tuitions for nineteen cadets to attend Washington County Police Academy Number Ten. Okay. All right. I need a, all right, it's okay. All right, first off, I get a special, uh, motion for a special session.
Sir, move.
You got a second? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay. All right. Sorry, I got ahead, so. All right, I need a motion for approval of purchase for, of tuition for nineteen cadets to attend Washington County Police Academy Number Ten.
Mister Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council approval of the purchase of tuition to the Washington County Police Academy for nineteen cadets. This will be paid four out of HPD's operating budget.
You got a second?
Second.
We got discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Am I opposed? Next one, I need a motion approval of purchase of Flock Safety Platform LPRs.
Mister Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council to approve the purchase of Flock Safety Platform LPRs. These will be added to and complement the existing equipment. Funding from the Prime Camera CIP will be used for this purchase.
You got a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Am I opposed? Mr. Curious. Next is motion approval of a memorandum of understanding with Washington County Forensic Response Team.
Mister Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council approval of a memorandum of understanding with multiple agencies in Washington County, Maryland, to assist victims of crimes. Washington County Narcotics Task Force, the term of this agreement shall commence on October 1st, 2024, and shall continue until September 30th, 2029.
You got a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Curious. Okay, special session is now closed. We're going into the work session. Uh, first up, Mister Scott Myers from request of lights at Wheaton Park. Pastor Mack, you joining me?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
Can I first pause before we start and say thank you for what you do? Thank you. I understand. Uh, I appreciate your time, appreciate your commitment. So I just want, if you ever get thanked enough, but I think sometimes you need that. So thank you. My name is Scott Myers. I've worked for a local nonprofit called the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. Been doing this for fifteen years, uh, but since 2019, uh, we moved into an area that some of you are very familiar with, called Wheaton Park. And since 2019, uh, we now have our office a block from there on Pennsylvania Avenue. We began working with the youth in this area. What we are attempting to do, what we have been able to do in the last five years is develop a sports program for the youth in this community and serve the children. As you know, they're near and dear to our hearts, NFCA. So on the right side of, of that packet I handed you is a proposal about what we are doing and, and what we're requesting permission to do for the city of Heggers Town. I also included on the right side, on the second page, um, our investment. As a nonprofit, we raise local funds, and we have invested our own resources into this community through our year-round sports program and opportunities that we're providing for children. Uh, on the left, I just have some other general information. Um, it's a snapshot of the greater Washington County, what we do locally, uh, in our school systems, with our sports teams, our summer camp program, as well as a little bit of information about our national ministry. But to zero in on the proposal that I'm asking of the city of Heggers Town is, uh, in the fall, uh, what seems to be the largest interest of all the sports seasons, we've developed a very robust football program. We have an elementary team, uh, a middle school team, a cheer squad. What we're facing right now are challenges because we would love to also begin a girls' flag team to help feed into the high school new flag football program that's in the county. And I also have a desire to start a seven-on-seven or a high school flag team as well. A lot of young men that come to the park, uh, don't have a place to play. They're, uh, for different reasons, not playing with their high school programs, but they are available and they've been talking to me at the park about, uh, can we get a team started? I would want to be part of that. So in order to grow, uh, the ongoing program that's there, we face challenges with light. Uh, we have to begin, we begin about 6:00 PM in the evening, uh, in a big part because we're working with and collaborating with other organizations like the Homework Club. Those young people need to get off the bus, get something to eat, get to Homework Club. So we begin after, at six o'clock, and then what happens in the fall is daylight becomes an issue for us. Uh, it cuts down our practice time and it really prevents us less opportunity to add more teams. Also later in the fall, in October and November, we also begin to, uh, encroach into just not having enough time to get games in. Uh, we collaborate also with the, um, upwards program. They bring their teams to the park for our elementary teams, so we have teams to play and we take our teams over on Saturdays to play at Mogginsville, so our middle school team has a league to participate in. Um, the proposal is several things that I'm asking of the city, which is stated on the page for you to review. I'm asking that the city would first approve the, the opportunity to get lights for this field. There's already lights there for the basketball court, uh, which is utilized by summer league and different things, but we need lights for the kids, so it needs to be approved because it's a city park by, uh, by you and also help with, uh, engineering because we know there's also a lot of other park improvements happening. So we want these lights to also work in conjunction with what has already been proposed as the park improvements. The other thing is that I have, I already went and did some homework and have an estimated budget of about what lights would cost. And then my request to the city is if you have funds available, that you would be able to help me with this venture. Uh, but I am also willing to go out and get the money needed, uh, if I have to, to get this work done for the sake of these children and for the youth that are looking for opportunities to belong to something to help build this community. I brought Pastor Mack with me today. I think some of you may know Pastor Mack, but Pastor Mack is a member of our leadership board. Being that we're a local nonprofit, we raise all local, uh, all local dollars in our budget, all come from the community, from churches, businesses, and individuals. So we're very lean, we are in the top one percent of all nonprofits because of our transparency, but we raise every dollar and we'll even go further to raise continued money for programs like this. So any way that the city could, could help FCA, uh, make continued improvements in the park, I, I leave this at, uh, here for you all to consider and, and just would appreciate, appreciate the time that you give me today. Pastor Mack, anything you would add? Because you've seen us in action at the park and so I, I know you've experienced it firsthand, what God's doing there.
Yeah, well, I stand here as a board member and as well as the other board members as well, with support of FCA and Scott and his proposal, um, especially looking to enhance, um, Wheaton Park area that he has been very, we have been very consistent over the last five years, um, without a miss. Um, and I believe that it's a win-win knowing that with what we do, we can help assist with the funding as well and ask them what you can do as well, but the long-term that it will bring, um, lighting that can be accessible to all at the same time. So I just stand in agreement, um, with him and the rest of the board members that we stand by.
Well, thanks for joining us. Um, I can attest to how dark it gets at nighttime with one of the people who run summer league. And if there's no lights, there's no, there's no playing ball. So, um, definitely hear what you're saying about providing lights, but also we have the Wheaton Park project. I just asked Jim Bender and Scott, um, when we can have that back on the agenda for mayor and council to get and for the public to get an update on about the project in its entirety, um, because there will be a, uh, uh, a stage, another bandstand out in the, in the, in the field area. So I don't know how that will impact the games that's currently running right now, um, as well as playground equipment. Um, so there will, there are some things in motion already for the Wheaton Park project, um, that's being funded. So with that, um, I would be in favor of more lights if the cost is doable and also, um, and how that would look like as far as like the neighborhood itself, I would also want us to consider. Um, but I do agree that there needs to be more lighting, but how much and how it looks like and if that interferes at all with the current project we have ongoing will be my concerns.
I'm pretty much an ingredients with what Council Bell, I mean, Council, I'm sorry, Councilmember Burnett just brought to the table and I appreciate you guys for actually bringing this to the table as well.
Uh, I want to say thank you as well for coming in. The only thing I would say is when you come get my kids from Homework Club, they don't want to stay with me. They want to go with you. Just kidding, but, um, thank you for pouring in to, to that area and that community. And I see every time you come, I see the passion that you have for them and it's needed. You know, they get to experience, um, different activities and sports that they would normally get to do on a regular basis. So I appreciate that. I have seen how dark it can get there. And I think if I remember correctly, one of the other issues we had was, um, the summer was approach, well, spring was approaching, so the grass needed to be cut more so they could play a little bit longer, not get all itchy. So, um, yes, uh, you know, I'm down for your, you know, your continued, um, efforts in that community. So thank you for that.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, I, I certainly don't have any concerns with the proposal as it's provided. Uh, looking at, I guess, the three sides here that I'm looking at. Um, obviously I would have concern if the light would spill out, um, uh, across the street into the homes there. And, uh, even equally, so it looks like any prospect sitting above, you know, you put that light up in the air to make sure it doesn't spill out into those houses that are now, you know, on the same level as the lighting. And then obviously, as, as Councilmember Burnett indicated, as long as it's in concert with, uh, the plans that we have approved that are proceeding with other improvements to the park.
We did, um, we did some little bit of investigative work and that was one of the things in the proposal that I did have, um, a company come in to take a look. As part of that budget, we talked about the lights going over and extending beyond into the homes. So part of that proposal has lights high enough on the poles so that it shines down versus out. That is one of the things we're looking at. Um, I also did meet with some of the city employees to ask ahead of time, um, so they could give me some feedback on what other things are here, like the bandstand. And we were able to look at the layout. And so I think it looks, it looks, as long as we double check those things. If the engineers could, could help us say, this is where we would want these poles and these lights, we could co, help collaborate with the company that could do the work and to make sure we put things in a place that's not interfering with what's already been planned. It looks like it would work. Um, it, it appears that there's a possibility. So if we can double check all those bases and have the engineers look it over, um, and also make sure we don't have spill over for the communities there, that that's not shining in their window. And also I don't, I don't know what the, if there are maybe moratoriums on how late you can keep lights on. Obviously, we can't keep them on past a certain time. We're not talking about having these out till midnight, you know, maybe, maybe nine thirty, ten o'clock at the latest, obviously. We wouldn't want any of the kids out that late, the high school kids, even we'd want them to be getting home, but, how would that work with, um, little leagues or other, other things too, uh, with the city and, um, so yeah. Hopefully it would work.
Yeah, I'm supportive of it. I think as long as we don't have light pollution, then go onto the residence houses. I don't, I was part of FCA in high school back in the dark ages and we went to a Carolina and Clemson game, so that was a lot of fun. Um, but yeah, I think it's great if we can help you all in any way we should.
Bring something back?
Yeah.
We'll bring it back.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Okay, next up, uh, Michael Kiefer, talking about, uh, Hagerstown, uh, City Sister, Hagerstown, Indiana.
First things first, and I still want to be a bottle of water.
You sure can.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Council and Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to come before you this evening. Before I discuss the reason that I'm here, I want to bring you up to speed a little bit. This relationship started back in 2013. And the only one at this table who was part of that when I was here to speak for the council, Mister Alshire. And I actually have to apologize to you, Mister Alshire, because in all that time, I've not gotten with you to sit down and introduce you to Heggers Town, Indiana. So I will reach out to you and we'll do that. Problem we've had over the thirteen years, um, is the fact that council or mayor have been short-termed, all right? Whoever the mayors were, were short-term mayors. Council members have come and gone. So what I'm hoping for is some longevity that we can work together to help create the tapestry that we've got started. And let me tell you some good things that's happening. I started a scholarship for one of their graduating seniors ten years ago, a $500 scholarship. This year is going to be the tenth anniversary for that scholarship. Well, I'm pleased to say I have had an additional sponsor come on board that's matching my $500, so I can give away two $500 scholarships this year. And I'm really excited about that because it's been a tough, tough task selecting the best one out of the ones that I get. So I'm tickled to death. Um, I'll tell you, Goodwill Athletic Association. Anybody familiar with that organization here? They're the ones that stepped up and said, we want to help. So I'm tickled to death that they've come on board with that. The second thing I want to tell you is if you go to the Maryland Theater, one of the ushers that you will see there, Randy Samu, the gentleman in the wheelchair. Everybody familiar with Randy? Okay. One of Randy's hobbies is he likes to put models together. A few months back, he put together a model and he posted it on his Facebook page. And what the model was, was a auto car truck. Anybody here familiar with that name? Probably not. It's an older truck than Mack truck. That's how far back it goes. They are manufactured in Heggers Town, Indiana. When I saw what Randy did and he put on there that it was a auto car truck, had a conversation with Randy and I asked Randy, I said, would you be willing to separate yourself from that? And he asked me why and I explained to him, I said, I would love to be able to take that model out to Heggers Town, Indiana and present it to the CEO of Auto Car at their plant. So Randy said, I would love to do that. So he put it in a case. I went over to Aladdin Awards and had a nameplate put on it donated by Mister Randall Samu, Heggers Town, Maryland, Sister City. Okay, so we've got that. Thirdly, and I, I'm so excited about this. I've been trying, I've been beating the bushes for years to get this done. I'm actually going to have a sit-down interview and photo shoot with the Heggers Town magazine. Okay? I think the story needs to be told. I think the gentleman, Mister Ralph Teeter, who this council has approved, you folks weren't here, Mister Alshire was and Miss Burnett was, that approved the alley sign for Mister Ralph Teeter, which is right beside my house and I'm so proud of that. But I think Mister Ralph Teeter's story should be told as well. So I'm looking forward to talking, the lady that I've been in conversation with is Lisa Murray Gregor. Just got a text from her earlier today. She says she's probably going to start the article next week. So here in the next couple of weeks, we'll have a sit-down, uh, because we did a long interview over the phone. But she's going to come to my house, we're going to do a photo shoot, we're going to have another conversation and we're going to get the article posted and published. I'm really excited about that. All right, now bring me to the reason why I'm here this evening. My brain runs a thousand miles an hour. Ever since I came up with the idea of the Sister City idea back in 2011 and it came to happen in 2013, uh, I've been really staunch on doing everything I can do to build on the relationship. We've had folks from there come here, we've had folks from here go there, um, and we want to continue doing that. And I also want to, I want the city, now this is where I need folks on the council to be here for some period of time so we can come, come up with the proper idea. And, and don't ask me what that idea is yet because I don't know. And that's why I'm here to kind of get you all to come in to have a conversation. We need to kind of come up and create an idea that really binds the two communities together. That hasn't happened yet, but I know it can happen. Okay? I've got some ideas, uh, like an exchange program between their high school and our high schools here. I've got an idea about a, um, pen pal relationship between Jonathan Heger Elementary and their one elementary school out there. But I'm not getting any traction, so I want to work more on that. And any assistance I can get from any of you folks at this table would be greatly appreciated. But here's why I'm here. Couple of months back, I had an idea. Wouldn't it be great if we could create a Sister City flag? For Heggers Town, Indiana and Heggers Town, Maryland. I reached out to the students at the Barber Ingram School for the Arts. I met with their art instructor and the students and I said, I want you kids to get your heads together and help me create an idea for a flag. And I told them that I would award the one that was selected a hundred dollars. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to meet the young lady that the selection of the flag I chose, her name is Brielle Fair, P-H-A-M-E-R. Falling Waters West Virginia. Anyway, they didn't disappoint me. I knew the kids would do outstanding because being an usher at the Maryland Theater, I see a lot of talent from the school on the stage and musically and all that. So I wasn't afraid that they weren't going to be able to figure something out. Okay? Well, the first design that the young lady, this is the one that I, I chose. I thought, that's really nice. And I've sat here with three of the council members talking about it at breakfast, okay? And they thought it was a wonderful idea too. But this young lady, smarter than me and smarter than the rest of us, she sent me a text back and said, Mister Kiefer, I need to tweak that a little bit because I didn't exactly present the state of Maryland the way it should have been presented. What we were lacking, if you see here, there's no separation for the Chesapeake Bay. So, there you go.
Nice.
All right? And I said, girl, you knocked it out of the ballpark. Okay? That's, that's absolutely wonderful in my eyes. My purpose this evening is to come before you as an elected body. And I don't know, I don't know everything. I don't know if there's other Sister Cities. I know we don't have a Sister City flag with Basel, Germany. And I don't know if that's even a thing out there. But in my head, I thought it was a great idea. So I wanted to come before you folks this evening to ask you for a proposal to adopt the idea of a Sister City flag and for the approval of the design, which I just showed you. And I'm absolutely open for any comments.
Comments or questions for Mister Kiefer?
You have my approval.
Well, to make it official, I think we got to have a vote.
We can't, we can't vote.
You can't.
But I think we're all open to support.
It doesn't have to officially be voted on?
Yeah.
I mean, this is a, this is a piece of history here.
I think it would be good to have a vote on the regular session at the end of the month.
Okay.
Yeah. Include the design as part of the, uh, part of the motion.
Now, you want me to hold off until you actually do that? Before I go to VJ's and have the conversation about?
I would, just to be safe, yeah. I don't think there's any issues, just be safe. Yeah.
That's, that's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking. I just thought it was a great idea. I think it's another way to, uh, build on the relationship between the two communities. And I talked with the folks out there, I sent them a copy of, well, I gotta, I gotta reach out to Chris tonight and send him the updated version. I sent him that version and he said, that's great. He said, they didn't have a problem with that at all. So I'm going to send him the updated version and he'll be tickled to death with that. So I'm looking forward to, when I go out in May, I'm going out the 28th of May, which is on a Wednesday, and I'm coming back on a Saturday. I will open the invitation up to anybody here at this table. If they so choose to want to join me, I would love to have you, being a new council and a mayor, to be a part of it. Don't feel obligated that you have to do it right now, but at some point in time, I'm sure some of you or all of you will find your way out that way. Okay? So again, I thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening. I hope it didn't bore you, gave you something to think about, and I look forward to hearing back from you.
Thank you for taking our relationship.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. It's my passion. And, uh, like I said, Bill will have a conversation.
Okay.
And as a matter of fact, before I leave, that's an hour and a half video that will introduce you to Heggers Town, Indiana.
Okay, I appreciate it.
When you're done, let me know. Just leave it here at the office and I'll pick it up. All right? When you're done, let me know. Just leave it here at the office and I'll pick it up. All right?
All right.
I have this to give off to you.
Thank you.
I love it.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kiefer.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Mr. Eric Dyke, Director of Public Works from Fishing at Pangborn Park.
Hi. Good afternoon. Uh, real quick, just a couple of comments on the, on the Wheaton Park. We had met, staff had met with Scott Myers, Allen Seite. And, um, there was a way to put the poles in and, and make all that work. We met with them several months ago. It wasn't one of the, um, improvements that were planned. The Phase One and Phase Two improvements at Wheaton Park came from neighborhood meetings several years ago. And that was never part of it, but doesn't mean it can't be part of the future. But we did meet with them, we did talk about with staff, and it's doable. It's possible to make it work out there, so.
Okay, it's good. Thank you.
Um, okay, fishing at Pangborn Park. So the last, I guess, the citizens' comments, there was comments made by, by a resident regarding the fishing at Pangborn Pond. And, um, they're concerned, uh, the citizen, um, and she's been here several times. It was about fishing lines getting entangled in the, in the feet of the geese. And while that has happened, it's, it's not very often. But I'm here as representative of Public Works and Parks in full support of keeping fishing at Pangborn Park. And mainly the reason is there's 22 parks and playgrounds, um, within the city. There's only two places you can actually fish within the city. Pangborn Pond is one of them. The others is Kiwanis Park. And if you know where Kiwanis Park is, it's not very easy to get to. It's not in a residential area, it's in a, in a commercial development area. And it's all natural. The only thing man-made there really is the pa- is the paths and the boat launch. Pangborn Park is the only park that has a walking path around it, and it's actually set up to be for fishing for kids 16 and younger, seniors 65 and older, or those with mobility issues. And so it's a unique spot that allows fishing for, um, people that may not be able to access fishing other places. We don't allow fishing at City Park. I mean, there's a large lake there, but there's no fishing allowed there. So staff has spoken with Department of Natural Resources. They come in, I think, three times a year to stock it. They stock about 1,200 fish or more every year. Um, they come back every year and kinda check that trout like to, and what they stock is trout. Trout like fast-moving water, that pond clearly is not fast-moving. So they come back to see if the, if the fish have been caught. And they can tell because the fish will be, you know, they're not gonna survive it. And then when they come back and check, they're rarely that they find any trout there. Meaning they're being caught. Meaning there's a lot of fishing happening there. Um, so when DNR found out what was going on, they gave a letter of support. We got letter of support from several others, including, the most recent one was from the, um, President of Antietam Fly Anglers. Uh, we also got from the, uh, letter of support from the, um, Free State Fly Fishers, the Big Hunting Creek, uh, Working Group, and of course, TNR. Um, the park staff have taken these concerns regarding the geese and the fishing lines seriously. And I think they've done everything within, within reason to help, help with that. They've tried to catch the geese when they could. They've removed fishing lines. We have signs, we have trash cans. And we enforce it while, when we can. But we only have so much staff and you can't be there 24/7, obviously. Um, we don't wish any harm to any animal, any of the geese. It could have got the fishing line there, it could have got tangled fishing line in other places. We just have no idea. And the incidents have been two or three in the last year or so. So it's not a lot. We just think that's important to keep fishing there for these kids, for the youth, for the seniors, and for those with mobility issues. I read here also Lynn Henderson, a former council member who was part of a group called Many Individuals Helping Individuals. They've held a fishing frenzy there for years. And that was some of the photos, that was one of the photos I added there. One photo in my memo was actually from Google Earth. And I just went on there to get some photos, and lo and behold, there was two kids in the photo on Google Earth actually fishing it. That's not Photoshop, that's, you can actually see that on Google. So I thought that was pretty, um, coincidental. Um, but anyway, that's, that's my take on it. Um, council had, there seemed to be support somewhat from that, from the citizens' comments of supporting banning fishing. And it's the reason I'm here to talk about it.
So I would like to thank Mayor and City Administrator for putting this on the agenda because yes, we have several emails and, and from, uh, one particular citizen, and she's been to our regular sessions numerous times, even at the, during the previous administration on this issue. And like Councilman Alshar mentioned at the last regular session, that there has been efforts in place, right, to stop those from breaking the rules or causing harm to the wildlife by leaving the fishing lines and trash, et cetera. But at the end of the day, it's not working because there's still issues. So for me, it, we have 22 parks. It's gonna be difficult to have this enforcement on this particular area to stop the bad ones from causing the issues. Which is why I'm in favor of banning fishing at that particular park because we just can't enforce it. And no matter the efforts we put out there, wildlife is still getting fishing wire around their necks. And the citizen, um, and other citizens along with her have been diligently, diligently out there picking up the trash and cleaning up the work, um, cleaning up the mess, um, that they discover while at the park.
Yeah, we did a, never clean up there with Dewey Central two years ago. We did see some crazy stuff there that, uh, concerned me, I know that. Um, I don't know, I mean, I know the fish and the geese and duck population are separate. Do you think that by banning fishing there, that would change the geese or duck population by any chance or anything? I mean, it's the longest stretch, I don't think it would, but.
I, I don't think so. They're mag- they're migratory birds, they're gonna, they're gonna move around and they see.
My only concern about the parks here is that they need to pressure wash more around the ponds because lots of poop there. And people can slip. I did prepare it in another city, a lady slipped on it and she sued the city for $20 million and she got it. So I think we definitely need to pressure wash around there more, so. And of course, I know we had a lot of seasonal stuff, so it can't be all done all the time.
And then I just have a question, um, Eric. Going into the future of Lake Arparks, is it possible that we could relocate or just have another area that we could designate to have those people who are, you know, interested in fishing that have, that lack that accessibility? Similar to that pond, but just not there?
We have a lake at City Park, which is mostly carp and that sort of thing. Um, we don't, we ban it there because there are just so many people there. We don't want people with fishing rods and stuff. Pangborn has a pond and Kiwanis has Antietam Creek. I don't know of any other real sizable water that's near anything else.
Okay. Just so I know, um, so it's not like a timeframe that, like, you can kinda just go there and fish whenever you want?
Well, they still have to debate state laws. They can't just fish anytime. You have to, you have to get during fishing season, you have to have a license if you're 65. I'm not an angler, so I don't know all the rules, but you do have to follow the state laws and such, yeah.
Okay, so that I didn't know, so?
We just keep, we just keep most people out of there.
Like?
I think if you're under 16, I'm not sure you'd need a license, honestly.
Okay, so the younger kids, they don't need the fishing license and they can kinda?
I'd have to look it up, but I don't think so.
Okay.
There's.
It's like once a year, they have that event where people can come. So that, that, the only thing I can think of, that would help with, like, if the fish population exploded, you know? But I think, you know, I am concerned about the enforcement issue because, you know, we've got some issues around there. And I, and I live right by there, so I've walked and seen it, so.
So what if it's like, um, the younger population that are throwing the trash or leaving their fishing lines? I've never fished in my life. But if it, what if we have it to where they have, do they have to fish with an adult?
That's the thing, the enforcement is not there. So even, there's times when I'm at Pangborn and there's like 12-year-olds alone.
That's what I'm saying. Or in the pond. They had to have an adult that could limit, but even the adults.
Right.
Yeah, but it's rare to, to a fishing
Right.
lake and there's anyone there to enforce it. Once DNR drives by.
So, so you've never fished, but when you fish, there are times when your line gets caught in the water, on a log, in the trees. You just, you can't retrieve it. It breaks, it's where it stays.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah. So it's not, so it's not always purposeful. It's not always just people being irresponsible. Fishing has that, unfortunately, that's part of it.
And Eric, there was even, um, trimming of tree branches at one point, right? To help address those that get, you know, get stuck.
Right.
I don't know if I'm doing it right, but you know, it's tough.
Close enough.
But, you know, on the branches, so they were, they were cut back at, at some point too. Yeah, it's a tough one. It's unfortunate because those that use it.
It's council's decision. It's not often I come here to.
Yeah, it's great, but I don't, but if they were to ruin it for wildlife, then that's not great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then that's why I see the issue is the enforcement is just not there.
So I used to volunteer to do the cooking at some of the my high events, um, during Lynn's time and then after for some period. And the difficulty that we would run into is exactly that type of negligent activity that we're talking about. The guys would look and see one that was gonna be stocked, you know, three bed, three days before, and then they would come in the night and they'd fish. And by the time the kids got there, there wasn't fish. Then we'd put them in later. You know, but then the fish wouldn't move because it takes them some time to acclimate uh, to that environment. And I guess to me, that, that experience sort of stays with me that folks just um, ruin it. You know what I mean? For what you're trying to accomplish. And I feel like, I feel like we've tried like a half a dozen things at this point. And it results in the same ruination by the same people who repetitively just don't care. And, and I, and I don't, I don't know what other alternative. And then I look around and say, well, and I did look at these other places, that's what I was looking at just now. The other places where, where you identify that there are youth, senior, and, and, and fishing for, uh, individuals with disabilities. And a lot of them are certainly not, I mean, you're talking Garrett County, Allegheny County. The one that is probably the, the most similar is maybe Western Fort, but the rest are in fairly remote areas, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Where you don't have that level of activity, you know, likely happening on that regular of a basis. Um, and with that accessibility, especially during after hours. And so I guess that's, you know, I don't know how you fix that. And I, and I agree with you, like, you know, you know, you can't manage that um, uh, issue. And while I think there's probably two or three incidents that get reported also that we may see, like, I'm thinking in my head that there's at least, you know what I mean? 10 times that many of the people just see whether it's a repetitive issue of a specific, uh, um, uh, item or instance or, or not. And I think the last thing I would wanna do is lose the my high event there. Um, or any event that would wanna do that, which is why I'd rather be an event-driven, um, item. Like, rather than, and I get, I get it, you're not gonna prevent that, and, and I don't expect people to be out there like three days before, be like, hey, you know, quit taking those fishes for an event on Saturday, you know what I mean? But at the same time, I wouldn't wanna negate the ability for my high or other groups who wanna do a fishing rodeo at that pond. I just, I, I, I'm struggling to find the benefit of it being open and available, you know, carte blanche at all times.
For me, it's just another amenity we find in, you know, part of it also is. And I gave you that chart for, we built that chart last year to show all the amenities we have. And so when you go online, you can see what's at each park, right? And so fishing is just another one that's available. So if you ban it, it's just one amenity that we take off the chart.
So maybe this last ditch effort to have this conversation about what, what can we do? But, um, are there ways to, are there ways to actively limit um, the repetitive issue which is getting snagged? And, and I don't know that, cause I don't know what the, the, I don't know what the, the health of that, you know?
I don't know what's down in the pond.
That's what I'm saying.
Or what falls in the pond, or somebody throws in the pond, right? It may not be a limit, maybe it's something, a shopping cart.
I know.
It's thrown there. That's not unheard of.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah, we find those in storm drains. I mean, you'd be surprised what people jam down in those storm drain. TVs and shopping carts.
Across from me, that I've seen a lot of 18-wheelers park their vehicles and cars are hanging out there.
Eric, is a fishing frenzy already scheduled for this June?
You know, I don't really know. I tried to, so, so Lynn Henderson passed away years ago. And then Bill Beard was the gentleman that, that, and he passed away.
Passed away.
Last year. Yeah, it was just last year.
That's a year.
Yeah. So when I called their phone number, cause I wanted to get their take on it, it didn't go anywhere, just rang, does it? So I don't know if my high, the, after Bill's passing, is still viable or not, I have no idea.
I mean, this may generate citizens commenting, sending in emails or some.
Probably, especially we put signs, fishing, that may, you know?
Yeah.
That may stir the, the natives up a little bit, but we'll see. What I'm, what I'm hearing is you want us to, to end fishing there. Is that correct?
I'm for ending it there.
I think if it's just for occasions with the group, that's fine, but the rest of the year, we're gonna have people that mess it up for everybody and it's not fair to the wildlife and everybody else.
Uh, I kinda agree. If it's an event to where everybody can take part in, um, fishing or, I'm not sure. Um, so yeah, that's where I'm at with it.
Yeah, like event, specific. I agree with that too. Where it could be monitored, yeah. But not all.
Where you only stock it for that particular event.
Yeah, so it's like a one time, two times a year event. Yeah, everybody comes out.
And I feel like that's where you can really possibly capitalize off of it.
What's that?
What's the inflow and outflow of water?
I have no idea.
I mean, is there any coming in and going out?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. The stream goes around, there's definitely a few that comes in and then.
Cause otherwise you're gonna run out of oxygen and then
Yeah, exactly.
you're gonna get a bunch of calls, they're gonna be 70 fish belly up.
Yeah.
I wouldn't doubt.
Yeah, overpopulation, that's why we can have the events to help the overpopulation of fish and stuff.
Okay.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Mr. Donald Francis. Ashmead Local 3373, made the contract and agreed.
Good evening, good afternoon, good evening, whatever. Depending on when you got up this morning, I guess. Um, a- as I mentioned last week, we have a tentative agreement with our police union, APSME Local 3373. Um, that agreement included, um, several items as it related to uh, requests that were made throughout the year, uh, one of which is um, the ability to go to a bi-weekly payroll in the event that our, our new enterprise system either requires it or kinda forces us into that decision. Um, in addition, it gives us an opportunity to, um, moderately raise, um, healthcare premiums when it becomes necessary. Um, our employees have not had an increase in healthcare premiums since 2017?
I don't know, it's been like four.
Yeah, it's like.
Okay, 15 years?
Yeah.
Um, for those of you in business, that's pretty much unheard of. Um, it also limits, um, the amount of money that is eligible for a transfer from sick leave to vacation uh, that gets paid out at the end of someone's career so that it limits it to $12,000 if you are hired after the 1st of July, 2025. In addition, if you're already in the system, uh, it pays out the full amount that's there, but you're no longer eligible to participate once you get beyond $12,000. And then finally, the, uh, the, the most sizable change will be to the, um, the pay scale, uh, which I've included in your packet. Uh, this particular contract represents a significant commitment by the mayor and council in the city, uh, to our police department. commitment by the mayor and council in the city to our police department. The cost of the FY twenty-six enhancements for pay to the general fund is a little less than one point five million dollars. That's for one hundred sworn officers, which a third of that amount, about five hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars is directly related to the nine additional officers that the mayor and council approved late last year. So with that being said, I will take any questions you have. And then at the end, if you're so inclined to approve, then I will be back for the formal session or the final presentation of the contract and the signing of the contract. Any questions?
Well, whatever we can do to be more marketable compared to other jurisdictions, people come here and support. We'll never bring Montgomery County or DC with the amount of money they bring in, but we certainly have to up our per game, especially if we have a lease shortage nationwide. And yeah, I definitely think local municipalities have to do their part to support the lease and do that.
And it has done that. It truly has.
That and the lateral, that and the lateral pay and the recruitment bonuses.
Right now that just started the, the program to become certified.
You know, between FY twenty-one and FY and the end of this contract, which is FY twenty-eight, starting pay will have increased sixty-two and a half percent. By top grade pay between twenty-one and twenty-eight, fifty-six percent. That's a commitment.
How we retain.
Okay.
Anybody that is watching at home, we're going to delete the last three items. We had to get Nancy out of here to get her home so she don't have to get out of the snow. So.
That'll go to next week. Put those on next week. Yep.
All right. We'll go straight to the city administrator.
I just have one thing. I, I just wanted to let everyone know, Councilman Alshire, again, being the only one who was, that will probably remember this name. I heard on Sunday that a former employee and one of, one of my staff people downstairs, Leon Albin, passed away on Sunday. Leon worked here almost thirty years. He was a programmer analyst. He helped me, I mean, he helped me when I started here. Everybody knew him. Leon, just a real good guy. And it, it very sad to hear that, that he passed away after a very short illness. So I think his mom is still here. I know she will desperately miss him because he did a lot for her. But I, he didn't have any children. He was a very private guy. But still, there was nothing, nothing about Leon you didn't like. He would do anything for anybody. So just wanted to, to recognize Leon today and Godspeed to him and his family. That's good for me. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bell.
Yes, so once again, Black History Month to everyone. So I just wanted to read something really quick. In eighteen sixty-eight, Mr. Jacob Wheaton, which is funny because we was, you know, talking about Wheaton Park, became the first African-American to vote in Maryland, casting his ballot in Hagerstown, Maryland election. He also played a pivotal role in establishing the North Street School in eighteen eighty-eight, providing educational opportunities for black children in the area. Wheaton Park opened in nineteen thirty-five to serve the community. As we reflect on the history of Wheaton Park, the legacy of Mr. Wheaton, we recognize this space as not just a park, but community. I want to thank Councilmember Burnett for, and those who have embraced her vision for the park, ensuring that the legacy continues with Sundays at the park and all that has been done there and that will continue. Also want to give thanks to former Madam Mayor, Tekeisha, for connecting with Mr. Wheaton's family, ensuring that his name and his contributions are honored in a meaningful way. So I just want to, wanted to read that in continuation with Black History Month and that's it.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Alshire. I have nothing this evening. Councilwoman Burnett.
So congratulations again to Community Rescue Service, AKA CRS. We're celebrating seventy years. The councilwomen, thank you for coming. Attended the banquet this past weekend. And we got an opportunity to see those who have gone above and beyond, get award and recognition. Over twenty-one hundred calls, I believe, last year. That group, as I serve on, on the board, I see the work that they do is commendable. So kudos to them. And highlight of Black History Month, I have a, have a, something to read that was provided to me. Well, the description was provided by Taiwan Anderson about her dad, Mr. Wayne Anderson. So highlight for Black History Month. Mr. Wayne, also known as Coach Wayne, has made a lasting impact on the Hagerstown community through the dedication to the sport of boxing and his mentorship of countless young people. Born on August twenty-ninth, nineteen fifty-nine in Virginia, Wayne faced challenges early in life, losing his mother at ten. Raised by his older sister Ruth, Wayne developed resilience and strength that would define his character. He started boxing at the age seven, age seven, and went on to fight over twenty-five amateur and pro matches. After relocating to Hagerstown, Maryland in nineteen eighty-five, Wayne joined the Hagerstown Boxing Club, quickly becoming Coach Wayne, under the mentorship of Coach Johnny. Together, they trained not only boxers, but also local police officers, firefighters, and community members. Coach Wayne's influence extended beyond the gym. He played a vital role in mentoring youth, teaching them not just how to box, but how to manage conflicts with discipline, with discipline and respect. His contributions to organizations like the Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA, and the Progressive Men's Club have had a lasting impact, making him a cornerstone of the Hagerstown community. His generosity and leadership continue to inspire, shaping the lives of young people and the community at large. So Mr. Wayne's story is remarkable. And he's alive today, and I feel it's appropriate that we should give him his flowers as in inviting him to City Hall for a recognition for his boxing work is still open. And he has trained some pro fighters in there, too. So if council will be okay with that, I would like to request for Mr. Wayne Anderson to receive a recognition from the city.
Right, your session, all right.
I'm sorry.
Do we have a D in the month?
Yeah. Thank you.
Can you get on to the information?
Councilwoman Clarity.
Yeah, I had the option and the privilege to, you know, watch the state of the state. I was kind of disappointed that, you know, there's a lot of taxes. You know, I hope that the governor talks about a tax cut that's coming. You know, I'm not too happy with the seventy-five cent, you know, DoorDash delivery fee. I think that's going to hurt folks here. I think, you know, the taxes are a crazy thing with Maryland, U-Pay City, County, and State, and they just keep increasing them. We're going to start to lose population like other states they're fleeing to, like Texas, North Carolina. We have states with no state income tax. You know, and I think that really government should live within their means. If we have to tighten our belts going to the grocery store, I think we should do that here.
I also want to give a shout out to Ken Buckler from Radio Free Hub for bringing a lot of these issues. I'm actually sending written testimony by two bills in Annapolis tonight that I think are going to really hurt Hagerstown. HB four eight seven zero, this will allow individuals to sleep and stay in public places such as public parks, sidewalks. I think this is bad for our camping ordinance. If anything, I don't want to turn us into Portland, Oregon, and San Francisco, which we're seeing those issues right there. So I will be testifying against that and sending that tonight to the, cannot pronounce it, Judiciary Committee, so I'm going to be doing that. And HB zero six three five, that's going to lead to more crime. It will no longer allow police to have probable cause to stop a car for such offenses such as expired tags and things like that. So, you know, I think we got to get a little more active of what's happening in Annapolis because these are detrimental to our city's goals for public safety. And I think they're not only bad for Hagerstown, but the rest of the state of Maryland. And I'll be providing those testimonies tonight.
Councilwoman Anderson.
As we continue to celebrate Black History Month, I also wanted to acknowledge that today is February eleventh, the International Day of Women and Girls in Science. It's celebrated every year on the eleventh and we need to, you know, focus on empowering and celebrating women who are trailblazing their way through scientific research and innovation. And on, and on that note, we celebrate you, Councilmember Burnett.
Thank you.
Okay, and that's all I have.
Okay, mine are just praises tonight. I want to praise our economic development department. I don't know about you guys, but I've sure seen a lot of ribbon cutting here lately. And I want to give them a shout out for their diligence in tracking businesses here. Also, if you haven't gone on Facebook to see the new eighteen recruits for the cadet program, because that's the largest class team. That's our largest, largest class. And HPD's recruiting efforts is, it's just unmatched right now. And you're doing a great job. And also, last but not least, I want to give a shout out to Wes Decker. He's keeping us in line. He's got great ideas for the State of the City video, keeping us on task and I want to, I want to thank you for that. Appreciate it. All right, do I get a motion to adjourn? I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on anything we, we talked about tonight?
I do have a question about the banning or fishing discussion. What's the next step? So we have to formally vote or?
I think we'll do a formal vote at regular session and then you guys, if the votes are banned, we'll have to post. We'll just have to post and then make sure, I, I would assume that there hasn't been a stocking until least March. So we have to just make sure those stop.
Okay, thank you.
I have one other thing, too. I believe you said you and Councilmember Alshire are going back to Smithville on the fourth March?
Yes.
Can I attend with you?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor?